Hey Taylor. It's not up, about? It's too up? How could be too up? What does he mean, Julie? It's too up? It's fine. Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Does anyone need a chair that doesn't have a chair? Is everyone in the back okay? Pat, do you need a chair? You okay for now? All right, thank you so much. All right, so we're gonna kick off this meeting. I appreciate everyone being here. Normally, we don't have this much fun, but today we are. And it's great to see so many smiling faces. Welcome to the Chester County Commissioners Meeting. Today is Wednesday, September 24th, and it is 10:02 a.m. My name is Josh Maxwell. To my left, that's Commissioner Marion Moskowitz. To my right, that's Commissioner Eric Rowe. Together, we are your Board of Commissioners. In addition to meeting in person, we are keeping the virtual attendance option to provide flexibility for anyone who wishes to be part of our public meetings, whether it be in this room or our computer or phone. As for all public meetings, this meeting is being recorded for broadcast on the county's website, chestco.org. If you are making any formal presentation to the Board or if you wish to make a public comment today, we ask you to just come forward to this podium right in front of Al. He's not, he's, that camera's there for something later. Come forward to that podium and state your name before speaking. Or if you're attending online, please use that raise your hand feature and just wait to be recognized to give a public comment. We will now call the meeting to order. And I will ask Ms. Carrie Stair to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. A new mom. Costco diapers, Carrie. Costco diapers. All right. And they deliver. All right, announcements. Commissioner Moskowitz, you have a proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
I do, thank you all. Good morning, everyone. I have this proclamation today. Whereas domestic violence is a serious and pervasive crime affecting people of all ages, races, religions, income level, and gender. And whereas in just one day, across the nation and its territories, over 79,000 victims of domestic violence seek services from domestic violence programs and shelters. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging and directly affects individuals and societies here in Chester County and throughout the United States and the world. And whereas recognition should be given to the advocates and counselors who provide care to those affected by these acts of cruelty and to all law enforcement personnel who work to bring offenders to justice. And whereas Chester County supports the Domestic Violence Center's Hope and Healing Campaign, noting that "one voice may be insignificant, but together, the collective voices and actions of a community can lead to social transformation." Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners, County of Chester Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, hereby proclaims October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, recognizing the work, compassion, and care of organizations like Domestic Violence Center of Chester County, which partners with other groups and law enforcement throughout the community to reduce domestic violence by supporting survivors and advancing prevention strategies. The Board also encourages all citizens to actively engage in efforts to address, reduce, and eliminate domestic violence against women and men. Signed, all three Commissioners, Commissioner Maxwell, Commissioner Rowe, and myself. And with that, accepting this proclamation is Dr. Dolly Weideman Scott, CEO of Domestic Violence Center of Chester County, and Dr. Yashoda Sharma, Board President. Thank you.
Good morning. On behalf of the Domestic Violence Center of Chester County, I extend our sincere gratitude for your ongoing support and partnership. Commissioners, your commitment plays a vital role in ensuring that critical programs and services remain available to victims and survivors of domestic violence throughout our community. Additionally, your continued investment in education and awareness helps shine a light on the far-reaching impact of domestic violence and the importance of prevention and early intervention. This year's National Domestic Violence Month theme, "With Survivors Always," emphasizes the importance of partnering with survivors in advocating for safety, support, and justice. At the Domestic Violence Center, we remain committed to walk alongside survivors every step of the way, empowering them to reclaim their lives and build a safe future. Sam's Story: A Journey of Strength and Healing. Sam, a mother of four, connected with local law enforcement during a critical moment. Thanks to our partnership with the Police Department through the Lethality Assessment Program, Sam was referred to the Domestic Violence Center for immediate support. Sam and her children entered our emergency shelter, where they found safety and resources to begin their healing journey. With the support of our team and community services, Sam worked to rebuild her life. Today, Sam and her children are thriving in stable housing, and Sam has secured employment. Even more inspiring, Sam now gives back to others as one of our active volunteers, offering hope to survivors who are just beginning their own journeys. Together, together, we are making a difference. And we thank you, County Commissioners, for standing with us in this essential work. Now, Dr. Sharma will continue.
Good morning, Commissioners and the community members. On behalf of the DVCC's Board, I want to thank you Commissioners for issuing the proclamation recognizing October as the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Your support sends a powerful message that our community stands united in raising awareness, supporting survivors, and working together to end domestic violence. Domestic violence is not an individual issue. It is a societal problem. One in four women and one in nine men experiences severe intimate partner violence. And members from LGBTQIA+ community also experiences domestic violence. Here in Pennsylvania, the law enforcement officers respond to thousands of domestic violence cases, and the survivor often makes seven attempts before finding safety. These numbers are serious, and they remind us why awareness and action is so necessary. That's why the work of Domestic Violence Center for Chester County is so important. Last year, we served around 1,853 survivors, providing 9,548 hours of counseling, including 528 hours of group counseling for 78 survivors. We also provided 488 hours of counseling to 213 children. And through our Adopt a Family Giving Program, we supported 143 families, 449 individuals during the holidays. Behind each number is a story of survival, resilience, and hope. The proclamation is more than symbolic. It tells survivors, you are seen, you are heard, and your safety and dignity matters. We are deeply grateful for your leadership and recognition of this work. With your continued partnership, we can raise awareness, strengthen resources, and build community where every person feels safe, respected, and supported. To our community, I invite you to show, I invite you to join us in showing support. Please attend Light the Night for Hope and Healing on October 7, 2025 at West Chester. This is the time to honor survivors, remember those who we have lost, and recommit ourselves to end domestic violence. Together, through action and compassion, we can be the voice that breaks the silence and the strength that brings hope. Once again, thanks you, thank you, Commissioner, for your partnership and commitment to this important issue.
Thank you so much. All right, we have one final announcement. The Board of Commissioners met in executive session on Wednesday, September 10th and Monday, September 22nd to discuss personal and legal matters. And next, we're going to public comment on the agenda. And I just want to preface this quickly because we have more folks in the room than normal. In a few seconds, the gentleman to my left, Mr. Byram, will read some rules. He'll do it in a very serious voice and very clearly so everyone understands exactly how public comment works in this county. And we encourage public comment. We want to hear from the public, this public comment on the agenda. I also want to point out, we've had to have some difficult discussions in this room on elections and different things that has brought out a lot of emotions. And I, I'm kind of, I'm myself. I personally found it helpful to make sure that we respect other people's opinions, realize that people have emotional attachments to some of these votes, and please be respectful for whoever's at the podium. When you're standing at this podium in a room this crowded, it can be intimidating. And we want to make sure that we're as respectful as many people in this room and as what we've seen in Utah and previously in Minnesota. Having discussions about this respectfully is incredibly important. And I think we can all agree on that. So with that, Mr. Byram, in your most serious voice possible, can you read the rules?
I kind of build up. I'm not sure if I can live up to that. Good morning, everyone. At this time, we invite public comments on agenda items only. If you wish to make comments on a topic that is not on today's agenda, we ask that you wait for the public comment period that is set aside later in the meeting. Comments on agenda items should be directed to the Commissioners, and there is a three-minute time limit per person. We thank everyone in advance for remaining respectful and considerate during the public comment process. As a reminder, public comment is not a forum for dialogue or for questions and answers with the Commissioners. In order to help the comment period run more smoothly, there is a timer with lights at the top of the podium. The timer will count down from three minutes, and the green light will initially be lit. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the yellow light will come on, let you know to start wrapping up your comments. Once the time limit has expired, the red light will come on, and you will have to conclude your remarks. For those appearing via Zoom or on the phone, we will provide a 30-second audible warning and then let you know when your time has expired. So if you'd like to make a public comment specific to an item appearing on today's agenda, if you're in person, please come to the podium. Importantly, state your name and municipality before speaking. If you're connected through Zoom, you can use your raise your hand feature or press star nine on your telephone keypad. We'll start off by inviting public comment here within the chamber first before moving on to comment for those connected through Zoom. Would anyone like to kick us off here today?
Ice cream isn't working, so I don't know if somebody can look at that.
Thank you, Dr. Reseca. We'll take a look at that right now.
We'll certainly work, look at that. Thank you.
It should be, if it's up there, Dr. Reseca, it should be working. But we'll, we'll send Taylor, our best tech person, on that right now.
Good morning. Sally Mininger from West Town Township. In light of the proposed ordinance 2025-03, I'd like to read the definition of ordinance obtained from the World Book Encyclopedia Dictionary, copyright 1963. A rule or law made by authority, especially one adopted and enforced by a municipal or other local authority, decree, regulation, and then obtained from legal brief on the internet yesterday. An ordinance is a law or regulation made by a local government. It helps manage issues within that community such as zoning, public safety, and local business regulations. And an ordinance sets rules for all of a specific area or community. The very similar definitions covering this number of years from both sources emphasize that the ordinance is written for the welfare of the entire community, not a select group. This so-called ordinance for a Human Rights Commission would dictate to community members how they are to relate to a select group of LGBTQ. And from the PA Constitution, I'd like to read Article 1, Declaration of Rights, Inherent Rights of Mankind. Section 1, All men are born equally free and independent and have certain inherent and indefeasable rights, among which are those of enjoying, defending life and liberty, of acquiring, possessing, possessing and protecting property and reputation, and of pursuing their own happiness. And from our Declaration of Independence, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That is, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. What is not covered in these documents for this LGBTQ group, I ask? So I know that even though my questions will not be answered in the format of this meeting, I have to ask, do you believe this ordinance complies with the definitions I just shared on the wording from the PA Constitution and the Declaration of Independence? And do you realize by enacting this ordinance, you will actually be discriminating against all those county citizens who are not members of the select group that are singled out in this ordinance? And thirdly, how will this affect the already overly taxed citizens of Chester County when this Human Rights Commission is hired, if this goes through? Please, please consider all of this before you vote on this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. And we'll try and address those questions when we get to that. Dr. Reseca, I just want to point out to you, on that screen behind you, there's that 62, that's the amount of people that are viewing this online.
Okay, thank you.
So if someone's having trouble, they can message, and we'll try and get them on.
Okay.
Please go ahead.
Respond. Hi, good morning. Beth Ann Rosica. I also have some comments and some questions for consideration on the ordinance. Want to know, what is the annual cost going to be for the commission? While I understand the Commissioners will serve as volunteers, the Solicitor's Office has been assigned many roles. How much is budgeted for the increase in time for those responsibilities from the Solicitor's Office? Additionally, the Commission has granted the authority to issue subpoenas, set up mediation, hold public hearings. What is the anticipated cost for all of that? The Commissioners are granted a large berth of responsibility based on the document that you have for consideration today. They are going to conduct investigations, issue subpoenas, hold mediations, have public hearings. There's no mention of qualifications for the Commissioners or required trainings. Who will determine the qualifications and the trainings? And who will ensure that those standards are met? Who will ultimately supervise these volunteers, who could make life-changing determinations for both the complainant and the defendant? Comments. Section 101(c) states that the intention of the ordinance is to treat all persons fairly and equally. However, it appears that people may use the restroom of their choice or the one that most closely aligns with their gender identity or expression. If a biological man enters a public women's restroom, I do not feel that I am being treated fairly or equally, nor do I want my children to be forced to use a bathroom with a member of the opposite sex. This is the antithesis of fair and equal. Finally, just because the state allows the formation of a county human relations commission does not mean that it's necessary or justified. Similar to the county health department, this is another waste of taxpayer dollars, especially in light of the 13.4% increase of this year. We already pay state taxes to fund the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission and the state health department. And now we will get hit twice for the county departments, which will basically do what the state departments do for almost every other county. And I fear that this new commission will be as detrimental to life in Chester County as our health department. I also want to add that my comments in no way are critical or dismissive of the LGBT community. I have no issues or concerns about their rights to be able to live life fully in Chester County. At the same time, we have to take everybody's rights into consideration. And I don't want biological men in the bathroom with me, nor do many other women that I know. And I think that that has to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Reseca. And the Solicitors are writing these things down to address whether or not bathrooms are in this ordinance and a lot of these questions that come up. So she'll get to that later. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Good morning. I am Diane Hauser of Euclid. And I also agree with Beth Ann that everyone's rights need to be considered. The Civil Rights Act of 1964 allowed discrimination based on sex, race, color, religion, or national origin in public life, education, and employment. Title IX is a federal civil rights law passed as part of the Education Amendments of 1972. This law protects people from discrimination based on sex in education programs or activities that receive federal financial assistance. Recently, the United States Department of Education's Office for Civil Rights found that Loudoun County Public Schools violated Title IX by discriminating against male students on the basis of sex. The Office of Civil Rights concluded that Loudoun County failed to respond, as required by Title IX, to reports of sexual harassment in the boys' locker room at the Loudoun County School, and retaliated against male students by failing to treat the parties equitably during its grievance and investigative process. The county failed to meaningfully investigate complaints of sexual harassment by two male students concerning the presence of a member of the opposite sex in male-only intimate spaces, yet thoroughly investigated the female student's sexual harassment complaint about the boys. The Office for Civil Rights determined that Loudoun County's policy of allowing students to occupy intimate facilities based on gender identity rather than biological sex violates Title IX, compromises safety, and infringes upon the dignity and privacy interests to which students are entitled. In addition, Loudoun County failed to treat allegations of sexual harassment equally. This proposed ordinance creates a human relations commission that will investigate and enforce claims of discrimination. Is it about unity, or is it about division? Is it about equality? Or is it about promoting the rights of some over the rights of others? Is it about, and what about the taxpayer, who will undoubtedly have to carry the financial burden incurred from legal expenses and possible lawsuits? Equal opportunity and anti-discrimination obligations are already enshrined in the United States Constitution and our federal civil rights laws. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your public comment. Come on up.
My name is Dante DeAndre. I'm a resident of West Chester Borough. I have been a Chester County resident my entire life. I'll try to keep this quick. I like to yap. My partner, my fiancee actually now, is openly non-binary. We've been together for a couple of years. And unfortunately, in the past month, really, past year or so, every time we go out in public, everywhere we go to eat, just to put a little personal light on this, I always have to ask myself, when they get up to use the restroom, is this going to be it? Is this going to be the one? Is there going to be someone whose brain got poisoned on Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, cable news, who is going to decide that my fiancee is in the quote-unquote "wrong" bathroom? And is there going to be an incident that changes the trajectory of our lives forever? It's not about who, even who runs the business, where we feel safe. It's everywhere. And this is a very real problem that hangs over our heads. It's a very real threat to be, what, to be queer in this country right now, regardless, even in a forward-thinking area like Chester County. You are living under siege. It's just the ugly reality of what it's like in this country. Hate doesn't stop at state lines. And so I urge this committee with urgency and expediency to pass ordinance 2025-03 because these issues are coming to a head, and it's going to get more intense. My beloved hometown, Downingtown, is set to elect the first-ever openly transgender mayor in Pennsylvania history. Very proud of that. But at the same time, the cultural offensive against the LGBT community, especially on a federal level, is going to ramp up. We've seen the rhetoric. We all, everybody has seen clips of the rally earlier this week or this weekend. They're coming for us, to be blunt. They've stated that. They've marked the target. And there's talks of FBI investigations. So I urge not, not to delay in the way that Delaware County did, but to immediately pass this ordinance and to enshrine these protections to ensure the safety of everyone in Chester County so that I don't have to go out and worry if there's an incident, what happens? I know who I can go to. I know who I can talk to. And I can feel safe and confident that no matter what, I know that this county has my back. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public comment. And I just want to say thank you for everyone being respectful of comments from people who have different points of view on this. It means a lot to us in this room. We appreciate that. Go ahead.
Bob Leopold, Birmingham Township. I'm here today to express my support for the proposed nondiscrimination ordinance. I understand the scope of the ordinance is quite broad, but I'm particularly interested in the provisions related to sexual orientation and gender identity. My immediate concern is for my transgender daughter. But my interest in LGBTQ issues is a longstanding one. Some 45 years ago, my youngest brother, a sweet, smart, funny high school student, committed suicide. He shot himself in the head because he was being bullied at school for being gay. I have seen the damage that can be done by ignorance, intolerance, and bigotry. So you'll understand why I support this ordinance. I thought about all this recently when I saw an article reporting that female victims of the recent Afghanistan earthquake were ignored by male rescue workers, even if those victims were injured or trapped under rubble due to a Taliban-enforced prohibition of physical contact between unrelated women and men. How would the women here feel if you were treated that way? How would the men here feel if your mother, your sister, your wife, your daughter were treated that way? All because of some archaic discriminatory societal norms. Now imagine how transgender individuals and their families feel today here in the U.S. Their identities, healthcare, suicide hotline, military service, access to bathrooms, right to travel, participation in sports, even their Second Amendment rights, which conservatives sometimes consider sacrosanct, are all under relentless attack based on archaic discriminatory social norms. I talk regularly with transgender individuals and their families, and I can tell you, they are concerned, scared, and angry. Against that backdrop, it's refreshing to see someone trying to protect transgender individuals rather than demonize them. I hope this ordinance will pass without opposition. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Julie Moyer. I'm a West Town Township resident. I'm also a very proud county employee for the past 24 years. And I'm also the proud parent of an adult transgender son. I run a support group called Transparents, where we support one another in supporting our kids. And I wanted to say thank you to the Commissioners for bringing this ordinance out today. My son is 29. He has a full-time job. He has his own apartment. He pays taxes. He's in a loving relationship with He's in a loving relationship with a fiancee. He is living the life that we all want for our children, but he has this cloud over his head where he can't get a passport in his gender, and he, there is threat of him being labeled as a terrorist because of the administration and the federal government. With this ordinance, he will at least have some peace that the county has his back and the other counties who are passing similar ordinances. I don't think that this is going to be a huge cost for the county, because I can tell you, as an employee here, there are going to be a ton of volunteers who want to help and who want to be involved, myself included. So, all of that being said, I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate all the work that you've done around this, and I'm hoping that it will pass today so that we can all have some peace. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stacy Stone. I'm a resident of Chester County since 1986, and I too, like Julie, have a transgender adult son. He's 30 years old. He's a newly-minted family medicine doctor. He delivered 82 babies during his residency. He is married, and he has had three surgeries, each more painful than the last, and smiled through them. This is who he is. He's also almost six feet tall and bearded. I don't think you want him in the women's restroom. Reducing rights for people like my son does not mean that it's an attack on my cisgender, heterosexual, white female privilege. It doesn't mean that it's an attack on yours, or yours, or yours. It means that everybody has the same rights. As we know, that is not the view in this country by a loud vocal minority who happens to be in power. But we can do something here to protect people like my son, so that he can get the life-affirming care he will continue to need for the rest of his life. He makes no hormones. Getting hormone therapy, replacement therapy, is life-saving, life-giving for him. Please protect all the people like my son and Julie's son and all our trans and non-binary sons and daughters. Thank you.
I'm going to take a different approach here because I'm concerned.
Your name is Ms. Pelley, sir.
Oh, Joel LaRusso from Malvern.
Thank you.
I'm going to take just a different approach, that I'm concerned about what's going on in Chester County. For example, did any of you other than Eric go to the Charlie Kirk Memorial in about 100 yards from here a week and a half ago? Regardless of what you think of those views, did you go? Could you answer? Did our new chief executive officer go? We have your schedule. I did it right to know. You go to every event in Chester County. That seems to be your role. I don't know about the chief experience officer, what that role is, a marketing person. Why didn't someone go? It's not about if you agree or not. It's about what country are we living in? Is it a young man who was expressing his views, whether you agree or not, was assassinated? That's troublesome. There's a lot of people in Chester County who are troubled by that, and that they're troubled that their representatives, so-called leaders, didn't show up. A leader goes to those things, and they try to comfort the community. Whether you agree with views or not, it's irrelevant. People are trying to determine what's going on. Why did this person get shot in cold blood? You should have been there. You should have acted like a leader of this county, and it's disappointing that you didn't do that. So what are you doing? You're creating division, us versus them. Because you don't agree with them, they're the enemy. We hate them. Either side of the aisle here, whatever you view on this, whatever you think of this new ordinance, you're creating division in this county. And I will say that decency doesn't have a party. Decency runs from Democrats, Republicans, independents, people who support this bill or don't support this bill. You're supposed to be a unifier in this county. That's hurting. That's hurting, and you ignore it. You're siding with the division, and I'm disappointed in that. I wonder if you have the right to lead these wonderful people. So this, this bill, whether you agree or not, my fear is creating more division, more us versus them. Maybe you should have gotten a better education. Maybe you should have talked to the individuals what this is about, instead of just publishing and saying, oh, we're going to pass it today. That's not the way leaders act. That's not the way you should act. There's decent people in Chester County across the board, and they should be treated with respect, and you should be a unifier, not a divider. And I, I say that in all sincerity, and I say that I hope we could come together as a community and make better decisions, because some people unfortunately here want, are my view, want to divide us. So I hope we could come together as a community, and God bless all of you. God bless you for being here and your families in Chester County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Before our next speaker from the fund, I should have mentioned something here or there. We really appreciate it if, and going back a few commenters, not speaking about the last gentleman, but just generally for everyone, please direct your comments to the elected board. We don't want to address people in the audience. Again, people, we want people to feel comfortable speaking and being here, and also staff too. If you could just address Eric, me, and Marion, and not people in the audience or staff, we'd appreciate it moving forward. Thank you so much.
So, my name is Cheryl Brubaker. I'm a resident of Westchester, and I have to say, I moved to Westchester, I think it was three months ago now, as I took a job in Chester County, and I tried to make a decision about where to live. Now, Westchester is very nice in that it is central to a lot of places that I need to go in Chester County. However, I didn't know how me and my wife would feel living here. And I have to tell you what kind of pushed the, you know, pushed the needle over for me was the pride flag that hung from the building. Because to me, that symbolized that this was a safe place where people cared about the safety for everyone. LGBTQ individuals experience more than five times the level of violence that other people do. And I think it's really important, when you make these decisions, to make the facts and understand what it means to protect everyone, because we do have to step up for marginalized groups if they are being targeted, and the stats show that LGBTQ plus individuals are being targeted. The other thing on the fact side that I just want to say, I'm a big science buff, clearly just recreational, so, but I have looked into a little bit of the science because I have a non-binary child, and one of the wonderful articles that I read talked about how complicated the biology of gender is. And it occurred to me, we have never legislated who chooses to go into which restroom. We've never had a law that says only women can go in this restroom. We put up signs, and people are allowed to choose based on how they identify. And if you look at the biology, and you can see how the SRY chromosome can end up on the gene, can end up on the X chromosome instead of the Y chromosome, you can start to see why people end up with a biology that is not clearly associated with one gender. So if we are going to start designating who goes into which restroom, we better have a pretty complicated way of measuring who is actually female and who is actually male. That's all I have to say.
I'm Blake Emanuel, Phoenixville Borough. Lot of great other comments, so belabor, I just really appreciate the commissioners taking up this issue. It's my understanding that a lot of time has actually been put into this, lots of discussions about what policy it would look like, how it would work and be facilitated. And I acknowledge that myself, as a cisgendered heterosexual woman, does not benefit from the LGBTQ plus portions of this policy, which is wider than that, but I appreciate the intention and the importance of it. We do live in a society that is targeting different identities, and we should all feel safe and accepted as who we are. And so I appreciate the intentions of this policy. One additional piece that's going to be probably a little less popular, as mentioned insofar as the questions for how much is this going to cost. One of the things that I will say for myself is that I am happy to pay more taxes when it supports the well-being of those around me. Again, not necessarily popular, but we all benefit when everyone feels safe and has access to what they need to live authentically. So I just want to thank Julie for her comment, because I don't know how much it will cost. I'm not speaking to that, but you know what? If my taxes need to go up to make sure others are safe, please do so. Thank you.
I work here in the borough and I live in West Brandywine. I wanted to, I don't have prepared comments, but, and I'm listening very closely to what everybody here is saying, and I guess I just want to say that I feel like this is an opportunity for people who don't understand and know much, or have ever met consciously, people in the LGBTQ plus community, to use this as an opportunity to ask some questions and better understand it, because I'm hearing a lot of misperceptions about it. People in the LGBT plus community are not, they're actually less likely to commit violent crimes, they are less, they're more likely to be a victim of a crime. I'm not sure that people are aware of that. This is a, this commission, I see as a local way, kind of like what's happening in the Northeast and over in the West in terms of healthcare and RFK, that there are local governments that are stepping up in contrast to the hate and the discrimination that's coming out of our federal government at times. And this is an opportunity for us as local people to protect everyone, to care about our neighbors, because they're people. They're just people. They're not that different from all the rest of us, but they're being treated as such, and that's why we have to consciously make decisions to step up for them. So thank you very much for taking this commission.
Hi, my name is Chris Kaliki. I'm a Phoenixville Borough resident. I am here in support of the ordinance that we're discussing. Growing up, I grew up in an environment where girls can do this, girls can't do that, no, that's for boys. And I know how hard I had to fight to shape my life the way I wanted it to be. Looking at this ordinance, I'm here in support of the LGBTQ community, but this ordinance would also help people of any race, any religion, ancestry, national origin, sex, gender identity or expression, sexual orientation, marital, familial status, disability, age, veteran status, source of income, use of support animals. This is not just going to help the LGBTQ community, this is really going to help the entire community, and there's hardly going to be a resident that doesn't fit into one of those categories. I am here in support of the LGBTQ community. This ordinance will probably not help me. It will probably not affect me, because I'm set in my life right now. But I have a lot of friends and family in the LGBTQ community, and they deserve to have equal rights. They deserve to have equal standing. They deserve to have equal opportunities, and right now, they, they not only are worried about those, but they're scared about their safety. I really hope that the county commissioners will do this to show their support for that community and give them at least a little bit of peace in these times. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Reverend Dan Schatz. I am a resident of West Goshen and Minister of the Unitarian Congregation of Westchester, and I'm here to speak to the same nondiscrimination ordinance. I come from a place of privilege. If there is a group that will not be in one of the, in any protected status, specially protected status, you know, I'm a cis hetero white male, and I want to say that this ordinance makes life better for me, because I believe that we are better when we are not all the same, and when we are able to live and work and dine and do everything else with, in a community of people who are different and who are free to be different in various ways, that makes life better for all of us. Others have told stories today and have been far more eloquent than I could be about the direct impact on individual lives, but I want to speak for just a second to a broader historical context. Today is the 200th anniversary of the birth of Frances Ellen Watkins Harper, the suffragist and abolitionist from Philadelphia, one of the most important black voices of the 19th century. Morality was important to her, and for her, morality consisted not in how you live, who you love, how you dress, but in how you treat other people. And she taught again and again that the, that society cannot trample on its most vulnerable members without, as she said, receiving the curse in its own soul. The increasing discrimination, hateful rhetoric, and scapegoating, scapegoating being directed towards members of the LGBTQIA community right now is exactly what she was talking about, and it damages all of us. While I have no illusions that taking this step is magically going to solve all problems, I do believe it is an important step for us to counter the curse that living in an unjust society brings in all of us. Establishing a nondiscrimination ordinance and Human Rights Commission lifts all of us and makes our community better and more fair for everybody. So I thank the commissioners for their work on this diligence, for their diligent work on this issue. I encourage you to pass the nondiscrimination ordinance today. I hope it is by unanimous vote. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Jolene Misselli. I live in Malvern. I've never attended a commissioner's meeting before. I've never obviously then spoken at one, and I am a little bit nervous, but I think this is an incredibly important issue. I echo the comments of the reverend, and I would like to say that in my view, having read the ordinance, it is unifying. It assures equal treatment of all people. It addresses insidious discrimination of marginalized groups that have been ostracized, othered, and yes, subjects of discrimination. And yes, we have federal laws, but we know today that those laws against discrimination are under attack. They've been watered down. They've been interpreted in ways that continue the othering and the marginalization of certain groups, particularly at this time LGBTQ, and more particularly, trans people, who historically have not been treated equally. So I would like to ask us to please eliminate the fear in this community, the fear among us of people who are different. I would like to ask if anyone here can tell me what gender I was assigned at birth, probably only I know that in this room, and therefore, what restroom I should use, or what job I should have, or what sport I should play. I don't think anyone here can really know the gender that I was born with. And I would urge the commissioners, and thank you very, very much for considering this, and urge you to please pass the ordinance, and I hope it is unanimous, to demonstrate the unity in the community for welcomeness for everyone. Thank you.
My name is Elijah Bolts. I live in West Vincent Township. I'm the proud parent of two beautiful children, and I also happen to be transgender. And I was walking up the stairs remembering when multiple families left the school that I was going to teach at because they found out this information about me. And I was wondering if anybody who is not transgender or queer in this room has ever had that experience, where a family might have left your classroom because you're straight. I hope not. I hope nobody ever has to experience that. Many people don't know that you have to legally adopt your children as a transgender person in the state of Pennsylvania. So this ordinance not only covers my identity, but also protects my family from So this ordinance not only covers my identity, but also protects my family from discrimination because of this fact. I was also walking up here and using the restroom, the men's restroom, and really wondering how many women in this room want me in the restroom with them? How many men want your daughters or your wives or your sisters in the restroom with me? And what I view this ordinance as is not creating division or specializing a certain group and really discriminating against all the others, but giving, giving those of us who do experience discrimination the peace of mind to know that there's an avenue to pursue action if and when that discrimination occurs. It was very troubling to me to realize that when my job was in jeopardy, that Chester County didn't have a protection that, or an avenue that I could go to, to, to receive like support and consultation. So I urge the commissioners to pass this ordinance today, and I thank you for all the work that you've done to bring it to us today. Thank you.
My name is Dan Meck. I'm from Chester Springs. You'll have to forgive me. I admit I am a bit nervous. I did not plan on speaking today and, but I do feel that this, this here is resonating with me, and this is why this is resonating with me. I'm going to take a little bit of a different approach, but I defy anybody in this room to tell me what race I am. What race am I? I'll give you a thousand bucks. If you don't know me, you can tell me what I am. I guarantee you, none of you are going to get it right, and here's why. Because I'm a mix. I'm a mix. I'm a mix. My parents transcended the, the civil rights and the racism, and my white father married a Dominican woman, and my sister and I were born, and my grandmother left town. She went to Virginia in shame, 1972. God, I didn't think I was going to say this. Man, this is funny. I did not, it's anything I was planning on saying, but here's the point, is that I grew up in a time where I was discriminated against tremendously. And then I was presented an incredible opportunity. I remember the first time I saw the courthouse in Westchester. I am, I'm going to get emotional here, and I apologize. I, I was good at working the system in school. I had figured out that if I paid attention in school and I did my schoolwork and I nailed the test, I never had to do homework. I also, I'm going to be 50 in November. Ferris Bueller was my hero. I guarantee you, no one in this room is better at cutting school than I was. And when I graduated high school in Philadelphia, I had one absentee less than the required number for failure, because I knew that number, and I hit that number. I did everything I could to keep my parents and the teachers off my back, and I got good enough honor roll that guess what? I got a full scholarship to Westchester. I got a full scholarship, oh, don't clap, you're not going to like where I'm going with this. I got a full scholarship to Westchester and I showed up, I remember I got off the bus, I looked at the courthouse, I was like, man, this is cool. This is like a city in the suburbs. Maybe someday I can make it out here, right? End of story. I live on six acres in Chester Springs, and I live a beautiful life. And that scholarship hurt me. And here's why that scholarship hurt me. Because I told you I did nothing. I told you I tried virtually nothing. I did everything I could to get my parents off my back. Grades wasn't because of education. Grades was I wanted to hang out with my girlfriend. And guess what they said? They said, hey, man of color in this city, we're going to elevate you. We're going to help you. We're going to help you. On it's at Westchester. Man, those four months were, that was a lot, that was a fun four months. It was a really, really, really fun four months. I didn't appreciate what I had because I had never been given the tools to understand what I needed. I had just been pushed along, and people who aren't my race decided that they wanted to help me. Let me help. Let me help. The best help I received was from a blond-haired, blue-eyed white girl from the suburbs. She was working three jobs at the time, and she said to me, you need to give that, I'm at a time, I know, I'm going to keep going, one more second. You need to give that diploma or that scholarship back. You don't deserve it. So, you know, we got married. We have two beautiful adult kids. We have two beautiful adult kids. My one son is gay, and my one son went to the performing arts school in Westchester. All right? I've had a lot of gay and trans kids in my life. And listen, I am very, very sensitive to the plight of what's happening, but I truly do believe that this attempt to help is going to do nothing to hurt like I was hurt. I was able to survive, and you know why I was able to survive? Because the community helped me, and I worked myself. We don't need your help to fix this. Our environment would fix this if you didn't step in the way. The divisiveness that Mr. LaRusso, I believe his name said, is absolutely true. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Scout Frost. I'm from Westchester. I come to you as a member of the public. I've worked as a public servant since 2022. I want to address the concerns about finding volunteers for this commission. I've worked as a, on a volunteer basis as an employee and as a member of the public. I assure you, there are people that want to help. There are people looking for opportunities to connect with the community. So you will find people. And in terms of why we need a local commission, it is so difficult to find support, especially from the state and federal government, and that goes for across the entire country. It's really hard to find support. Having a local commission gives us the opportunity to advocate for the people that are in our community. And the people that are in the commission will be of the community. They understand the concerns in this community. They understand the people that they're in community with. So having a local commission is much different from having a state or a federal commission. So I, I suggest that people look for opportunities to volunteer in the community if they're concerned about things like this, whatever their opinions are. I think that it's important for people to engage and to be part of solutions like this one. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Horgan. I live in Kenneth Square. I'm in support of this ordinance. I'm in support of it in the sense that no one should be discriminated against on where they can work, where they can live, where they can eat, and things such as this. But I do not agree with the fact that this ordinance would impose upon certain individuals that people who are not of the same gender can go into women's bathrooms. This is not correct. There needs to be another solution. There's a large population of women who are not comfortable with men, who were born as men, who only dress as women, appear as women because they believe they're women, and I not doubt that they believe they're women, but they should not be in the women's bathrooms. And this ordinance seems to me it would impose a force, women to experience things on a daily basis. And I do not agree where it might impose upon the community that men can compete in women's sports. It's not safe. Men are stronger. Women's sports was created for women, and that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Sandy?
Sandy Pammen, Leonard Grove Township. Making law in Pennsylvania is a meticulous process, and for good reason. State laws influence our environment, economy, education, our families, our health, and virtually every aspect of our daily lives. And for generations to come, to make new laws or change those already on the books, lawmakers follow time-honored constitutional procedures. On the following pages, you'll see how a legislative system developed centuries ago still works today, both through lawmakers and the Pennsylvanians who send them to Harrisburg. This is a booklet that you can get from your state representative. There's much to be proud of in Pennsylvania. Magnificent land. Sorry, this is really small. So I'm just going to skip that. You can get the booklet. I'm not going to talk about the emotional issue that's being presented here today because I see this as whether or not this commission is even lawful. I think we saw the Chevron case that was overruled, and basically it was saying that we can't have commissions, agencies create laws. We have laws. We need to apply laws. I want to make sure we're not rewriting laws because as we're often reminded, we have no kings. And that's at the local level as well. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Cindy Apostolico, and I'm from West Goshen Township. I had not planned to speak here today. If anybody knows me, they know I'm a planner. I would have planned exactly what I wanted to say, but there were so many comments in this regard that I felt like I needed to step up and say something. And I just took a couple notes while people were speaking, and I wanted to say, if people are allowed to discriminate against which people use which bathroom, I just wanted to say, what does that mean? I mean, I think we're pretty cavalier, like you can use the bathroom or you can't use the bathroom, but what does it mean? And really, it means that LGBTQ people across the US can't go to bathrooms at their work or at their restaurant or at a place of worship. It forces them to stay hidden, and that's a ratio. That's really important that we see and hear exactly what that means. And also, there is this insidious, unspoken thing that people are insinuating that if you were in a bathroom with a trans or non-binary person, that somehow that would evolve into something, that there are, they are violent, or they might attack you. And here are the facts that we know, that the trans and non-binary community are some of the least violent people there are. In fact, they are the victims to violence more than anybody. Truly. These people are not here to harm you. I say that as a cis straight white woman, but also as a woman who has many friends in the LGBTQ community, many loved ones. And we know that people you know have loved ones that are LGBTQ, and we know better than to do this to them. So I am here to say, please vote yes on this ordinance. We do need protection for our, all of our citizens. Thank you.
My name is Carol Campeni. I'm a longtime resident of Westchester Borough. I'm a senior citizen who has been an established taxpayer in this borough for many years. My husband, Lee Smith, refurbished the clock tower by Old Glory at the old courthouse on High Street in 1983 as a young architect. Some of us may not have even been born then. I identify as a Chester County Commissioner. Security, can you get me a chair so I can be part of the panel? Well, of course not. So even though I identify as a county commissioner, I cannot sit there because just identifying as a county commissioner does not mean it's true. Let's get real. It's not. Let me remind you that the ordinance you are considering adopting is against the recent Supreme Court decision ruling which denies the expansion of Title IX to cover gender identity and therefore invalid before it begins. And yet, you push it on us. You push many things on us. The most concerning thing is that you raised our taxes 13.47% this year, with more coming to pay for a bloated government bureaucracy. Payroll ballooned from $183 million to $220 million, from 201 to 225, with a 10% increase on 225 alone. Chester County's total budget increased 42% from 2021 to 2025 due to irresponsible spending. You, the commissioners, have recently appointed executives, not one. Maybe two, maybe three.
It's three.
Which are costing over $500,000 a year. I have nothing against the LGBTQ community. I have a, excuse me. I have friends whose weddings I have attended of their gay daughter. I support them. I have a cousin who transgendered from male to female. I love him. We need you to rethink your idea on creating another money-sucking position that we will have to pay for. You have no right to go against the Supreme Court. Oh, and by the way, my preferred pronouns are Charlie and Kirk.
Thank you for your public comment. Thank you, Chris. Come on up.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Borg. I want to thank everybody for being here today. My name is Christopher Kovardovich. I am from East Brandywine here in our great Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And I say that because we are, we have more under our constitution protections here in this great Commonwealth back in the 1950s when we passed our Human Relations Act. I want to, I also gained a master's in health communication, and I have been dedicated my life to really both public safety, security, and our community health. And I see this piece of legislation as part of that. We look at the statistics that we've talked about today on how so many members, like myself, a part of the LGBTQ plus community, who are more likely to expect violence. And you know, there's been a lot of nature will handle this. I think back to Black Plague. Half the population died. We don't want that. We need our public safety, our public health, our security. Security is so important. It was so important to me that I was willing to give my life for. I was willing to go to Iraq and put my life on the line. I think that this legislation can save life, and I want to also applaud this board for the earlier resolution on domestic violence. I think that it is a wonderful thing to come out here and just thank you all. So I didn't have anything prepared today, but I do want us to really think long and hard before we go out there and start cutting our money being spent on public health. Look at what happened during COVID. Look at the disaster that happened when we didn't have the global apparatus to handle it. So I really do appreciate that we have a Department of Health here in Chester County, and I urge, as has been brought up by other people here to cut it, I urge you all on that board to keep our Department of Public Health. Thank you and God bless.
Hi, I'm Chris Collinson, East Bradford Township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I did not have comments planned, and I am a planner like Cindy, so I'm going to try and follow the thread, but I wanted to speak from a personal level and give you an example of someone who has been in Chester County since the 80s as a white heterosexual male. I, you know, I'm not in the LGBT community, but I, I am, I am the proud father of a transgender daughter, 22-year-old who just graduated from college. This person went to Helsdale, Pierce, Henderson, grew up in the Westchester community. Was bullied in those schools for, at the time, being gay, to the point where she was suicidal. And it wasn't until she came out, first as gay, and then understood through, through much introspection over years, not a quick over years, not a quick thing, over years of deliberate introspection and working with professionals, that she identified as trans. That saved her life. She graduated from college. She has come back to the Westchester area, graduated in June, came back to the Westchester area because she wants to be in this community. She wants to continue to be a part of this community. She wants to continue to contribute to this community. She worked internships at the Brandywine Museum of Art. She's working a job today in our community. She wants to continue to be part of this community. This ordinance will give her that peace of mind that she can be, that she can contribute to this community in safety. If we lived in Texas or Florida, that wouldn't be the case. We're looking for protections against those kinds of discriminations with this ordinance. And we appreciate that. We appreciate that that is an opportunity that this commission is willing to give. And I would just say that, you know, as far as bathrooms go, my kid just wants to pee. Like, you know, my kid's not looking to do anything, any kind of harm to anyone, and neither are most of any other transgender people. They just want to live their lives. They just want to go to the bathroom. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Etchison. I'm from East Vincent Township. I also did not plan on saying anything, but I felt the need to. I'm going to guess that many of us in here are parents. I am. I'm the proud, proud mother of a transgender woman. We all want our kids to feel loved and safe. I want my daughter to feel safe in her home county. I love being a resident of Chester County because it is such an affirming county. As a member of the LGBT Equality Alliance of Chester County, I help to make sure that that's an affirming county. Let's just keep it that way. We just want our kids to be safe. That's all. Thank you.
Stephen Brown from West Chester. I want you all to realize that with this ordinance, a unelected, unappointed legally number of people will be having a hearing to take you against me or against somebody else, which isn't right. This person will have no authority. He will be a judge without a judgeship. And all of us here should be applauded at that. I don't understand how you can agree that these people should be prosecuted and these people shouldn't be without any kind of authority.
Sir, I'm sorry. I apologize, and we'll not take time away from you. And I think I said this before you entered. If you just make sure you direct your comments and points at us, I made that announcement earlier, it'd be greatly appreciated. Sorry for taking your time. We'll make sure you have your full three minutes.
Well, I just want to understand why you are doing this. Why everybody is so gung-ho to create a board that will have no authority? You have to answer this for us. And I hope you answer it before you vote on this, not after.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Colin Clark. I live in West Chester Borough. This is so fun. We should all do this all the time. I thought about thinking through a bunch of different arguments, and I feel like everybody's pretty much covered it. So I just wanted to say that I'm in support of the resolution. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Sean Williams. I'm from Wayne, so Radnor Township. I'm in support of the ordinance. I just wanted to really quickly emphasize that the main, you know, concern that I have for my community is that people don't feel safe. I don't know if certain members of this body are aware of how unsafe people feel, if they've dealt with that kind of feeling in their kind of day-to-day lives. I work in a lot of spaces. I run a lot of spaces that are safe spaces. And I really just want to emphasize how important safe spaces can be, and how important it is that when you want to, you know, say that you're creating safe spaces, that you say that message loudly and clearly. And having something like this in place, it really does send that message. Should it pass, I'm happy and thrilled to go from the rooftops and scream it to everybody in my community that if something happens, you have a place to go. I don't want them to really have a reason to have to do that, but the fact that they'll be able to is really, really amazing. And it will discourage folks from taking that chance that they might otherwise, you know, feel like they can get away with. So, yeah. On a national scale, people are, there's just so much pressure coming in. So when you're in local spaces like this, this is where local government, this is where local processes can really, really benefit because, you know, we can make a stand, we can tell people that you'll be safe here. So I implore you to pass this ordinance, and thank you very much.
Hi, Stephanie O'Brien, West Town Township. I'm sitting here listening, and I just can't believe we are sitting here with the most powerful people in this county, and we are having a discussion on division. We have so much going on in this country, and we're allowing them to puppet us to fight against each other. If we all got in a room, if they were able to put this information out to the community, there's people in here that have been up in these meetings for five years. You people have no idea the control and what they're doing to this county. And what they're doing to this county is exactly why we're here. We're fighting amongst each other. We are fighting amongst each other. And the people that you think who don't like the trans community, it's the furthest from the truth. We love you all. We just don't want to hear it, and we want you guys to do your thing. Okay, so here's my question. An incident happened before this meeting, that somebody walked into the women's room, and I was going to use it. And I thought, you know what? Now I'm starting to question my safety, because the person that walked into the room was clearly, clearly something that made me wait a second. Is this what we want? Is this what we want? And let me tell you, put this commission together, there's going to be people.
Excuse me. Hold on, Ms. O'Brien, just wait for a second. I know, I'm addressing that right now. I'm addressing that right now. Everyone, Ms. O'Brien, we'll give you time. Please, sir. Everyone. Dolores, excuse me. I don't know, I think you, Dolores, I'm addressing you, appreciate it. We want to make sure, this is a free speech country. Stephanie's been coming to these meetings for a long time. We're not going to agree with what everyone says at this podium, right? But it's really important, given the tenseness in people's hearts, that we allow people to speak during these three minutes at this time. So I really appreciate it if we let Ms. O'Brien finish her time and not have any outbursts during anybody's public comments.
Do all their fashion. Yeah. I want.
Excuse me. Ms. O'Brien, please don't address the sheriffs. And, sir, I would appreciate your cooperation on no more outbursts and for the entire. Dolores, Dolores, excuse me, folks. Excuse me, folks. We've had people with different points of view shout out previously, and we have not asked them to leave. We're going to let Ms. O'Brien finish her comments. We're considering a warning, we've done that in the past, for everybody. And we're going to ask Ms. O'Brien to please finish her comments. Ms. O'Brien, please go ahead.
So as I continue, and again, we, I mean, you say it, it's good and evil right now, what's going on. We just witnessed it. And he can call me any name in the book. I've been up here for months and years. Please. All I'm trying to do is help people. And just look, stop looking at the politicians to save us. Stop. We can do this together. And to go back on my original, as a, I don't even know what to call myself anymore, a regular woman. I am a woman, a mom, and a grandmother. Okay? I see you, Josh, but you know how passionate I get.
Just want to make sure your pro-.
I am a woman, a mom, and a grandmother. Okay? And when we are going to cause this division by this ordinance, then we're going to have people tattletaling on each other. And our side is now going to go to this community because we feel unsafe in a bathroom. And do you understand what this is going to lead to in this community? Do you understand? Bring yourselves up to what they are doing to us. That's it. That's it. That's all I have.
Hi, my name is Nancy Lorback, and I'm from West Goshen Township. I do not have a transgender member in my family, but I do have a brother in the LGBTQ community. But what I've been listening, and what I would like you commissioners to focus on when you make your decision, is the man who came up here speaking about his daughter, and he said, "She just wants to pee." That's it.
Thank you.
My name's Joe Carcione. I didn't plan on speaking today, but I've been interested in what everybody else had to say. Longtime residence, we have two sons that graduated from Henderson back in the 90s. And our youngest son back then came out as gay, and that was a tough time in the 90s to be gay. And so my wife and I got involved with PFLAG. We helped found the first PFLAG chapter here in 2001, held the first Pride Days the first couple of years. So we stayed involved in PFLAG and just retired. So I know a lot of people that are my friends that are LGBTQ community. And we were back in Cleveland for a wedding, and one of my good friends that I grew up with in middle school, who's a guy that always sees things in black and white, pulls me aside and he says, "Joe, how do you feel, you don't agree that trans women should be competing with women in sports?" And I said, "Well, as a matter of fact, I do, Lou." And I went on to kind of list all the reasons why, and I told them and shared my experiences with all of the parents and transgender people I know. And I stopped it and finally said, "Lou, do you even know any transgender people?" And he says, "Well, I don't." I said, "Well, I do. I know a lot." And he paused, and he said, "Thanks, Joe. This is the only way I learn things." Thank you.
Hi, my name is Galina Whipple, and I'm from Delco County. I just want to say, a bathroom is just a bathroom. And also, like.
Hey, friends. Let's make sure that we give everyone an opportunity to speak for their three minutes.
Delaware County.
Anybody in the United States is allowed, under law, to come and give public comment here. And that's, we've had people from other counties, other states. We had someone from Pittston last meeting. We are allowed, people from other counties are allowed to participate in our public comment. It's not a violation of the rules. But just so, for the note takers, to make sure we know we addressed geographic issues. Sir, we're going to let this person please finish the public comment.
Also, I just want to state that, like, when men and women bring, like, their children into the bathroom, we see no issue with it. I see no issue with anybody going to the bathroom, they just want to use the bathroom. A bathroom is just a bathroom. We're all doing the same thing in there. It shouldn't be a big issue. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to do, you want to, we have more in person? Come on up.
Hi, police fine, West Goshen. Didn't plan to speak today, but wanted to just say that my sister-in-law is gay, I have a niece that's gay, I have nothing against the LGBTQ community. Those who know me know I have an issue with process. Whether it's election law, whether it's local ordinances, I like process, and I like it to be followed. We have a process in our country where the legislation actually creates law. Right now, we have laws on the books. Pennsylvania has the Human Relations Act, and we have a Human Relations Commission in Pennsylvania. That commission, and that act, actually, specifies who the protected classes are. We have a similar EEOC, Title IX, Title VII. They all talk about who the protected classes are. And they are supposed to be the ones, the legislators are the ones who, if they want to amend that act, they want to amend that law for specific classes, then they're the ones that are supposed to do it. It is not the role of our county commissioners to be creating law. It is the role of the legislature. You are the executive branch for Chester County. You're not the legislation. And, again, it goes to process. If we want to change the law, then we go through the legislature in our state, in our federal government. This is not the appropriate venue. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Ms. O'Brien, give me one second. So I'm going to do some, we have all the new friends in the room, we have some old friends in the room that understand how these meetings work. This is the last opportunity to give public comment in the room before we go online. If anyone else chooses, there will be additional public comment, maybe in about 20 minutes as the meeting comes to a close. So there'll be another chance to address us in the room. But before we go online, is there anyone else that wants to come to the podium? All right, Mr. Brierman, why don't we go online?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking now online, we have, at this point, three requests to speak. Just as a matter of reminder, if you're connected through Zoom, you can use the raise-your-hand feature or press *9 on your telephone keypad. And we'll start off with recognizing. Brian, please introduce yourself and introduce yourself by your municipality as well. Go ahead. Brian, are you there?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Brian McBrady, East Bradford Township. Just want to start off and thank our founding fathers for enshrining the requirement of our elected officials to have these public meetings for us to come together and be a melting pot. So, thank you. I do want to just point out that the Zoom video link was not present under the agenda minutes. I had to kind of find a backdoor into this. I just want to point that out, something to look at. And then I do want to just pose a question about why the meetings are held at 10:00 a.m. during the week. It disenfranchises thousands of county residents who have to work, and it suppresses really the input from the community. There might be valid reasons. I'll reach out to you guys on the side, but I do want to just point that out. Also, I'm the proud dad of three kids who are being raised to treat everybody equally, all right, based on their content of character, not based on their identity. And I'm going to continue doing that. And I am in 1,000% support of the Equal Protection Clause enshrined in the 14th Amendment. And this is just another usurpation of that. It's very clear that you're going to just continue to push this protected class dynamic that's divisive, and then you're going to discriminate against those who aren't in that class. It's giving superior rights to citizens based on their identity or being in this protected class, and I don't agree with that. So I'm in opposition of this ordinance. Also, it's, the commentary from the supporters of this ordinance is concerning. There's been a lot of talk about, you know, speculative and theoretical crimes against them that haven't occurred yet, and that is forging county law as a result of it, and that's concerning to me. And I just want to point out that there's zero official cases of discrimination in the county, and that's per commentary directly from some of our council members here. So this is an unreasonable expansion in the scope of county government, again, opening up many vectors for discrimination and misuse of this. There's precedent that's being set right now in Delaware County. It's literally being litigated, the same exact Human Rights Commission is being litigated legally, and we don't want that for the county. And just all discrimination matters equally. So we have state laws, federal laws, I can rifle off 10 of them right now, Age Discrimination Act, Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 that protects these classes of individuals. So just want to point that out. I appreciate you hearing my feedback. And everybody, take care.
Thank you, sir. Next to be recognized is Jeanne Locastrove. You are recognized.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for letting me speak. I wasn't able to attend in person. I'm credibly moved by the messages today we've heard from parents and siblings and individuals who identify as LGBTQ. And I'm very sympathetic. I've had friends who are gay. I've had friends who are gay and transgender my entire life. I'm also an attorney and I also understand and believe that this commission would be illegally formed. I believe that it is ill-advised to go forward with this commission. I don't believe it will be legal. I don't believe it will be legal because I think you're trying to skirt the supremacy clause, which is found in Article 6 of the U.S. Constitution. I also see due process rights of being violated potentially when you have laypeople doing investigations. Can't have laypeople, volunteers, who may be very passionate and well-intentioned, but not legally trained to make evaluations of possible businesses and schools and small businesses could be affected. I think you're opening the county up to immeasurable litigation. First of all, you're going to have the due process arguments. You're going to have the supremacy clause arguments. You've got the litigation ongoing against the state right now by the Thomas More Society. You have Delaware County being litigated. We're going to be next. You're going to subject this county to litigation. And guess who benefits? Nobody. So I think you are well-intentioned, but we all know what happens with well-intentioned people. Sometimes the result is not what we intended. I just think this is not the road to go down. And I hope you get some good legal counsel because I just see this as absolute quagmire and absolute disaster. Thank you for, thank you for letting me speak.
Next up to be recognized is Ada Nester. You are recognized to speak. Please introduce yourself and your municipality.
Hi, my name is Ada Nester. I live in West Goshen, Chester County.
Go ahead, Ms. Nester.
I'm sorry, please go ahead, ma'am.
Oh, Ada. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Great. My name is Ada Nester. I live in West Goshen, Chester County. I am a rape survivor. The Chester County District Attorney prosecuted my attacker successfully many years ago. I hear a lot about rights today. Well, I'll tell you about a right of mine. I had a right to live my life without ever having to experience that kind of violence. But that right was taken from me. And because of that, I know firsthand how important safe, single-sex spaces are. They aren't a luxury. They are a necessity for women like me. The solution to discrimination against one group cannot be discrimination against another. My right to safety, privacy, and dignity does not erase anyone else's humanity, but it also cannot be negotiated away. Protecting single spaces is not about hate. It is about safeguarding the most vulnerable. Survivors like me deserve at least that much. Additionally, and to close, if you don't feel safe in Chester County at any point in any place, maybe it's time for a new direction for this county because Democrats have been in control for the last 10 years. Thank you.
Good morning. You can hear me?
Yes, please go-
Yes, my name is Jennifer McFarland. I've been a resident of Chester County for 50 years.
Ms. McFarland, please start again. I apologize.
Are we ready?
I'm sorry, please start again. I've reset your time. Please go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer McFarland. I am in between moving from East Bradford to West Goshen. Will be a West Goshen resident in two days. I have lived in this county for 50 years. And I've listened to a lot, all of the things the speakers had to say today. But the bottom line is, we cannot legislate facts. We cannot legislate morality. But we do have to make decisions based upon facts. We cannot make our laws based upon feelings. Now, as everyone has said before, I have no issue with LGBTQ persons, adult persons who can make their own decisions about the future of their lives. That's their right. But we do have to make our laws based on objective truths. Objective truth is found in the Bible. And in Genesis 5:2, it says, "And God created them, male and female, and blessed them." I was created female. And yet, in my life, I was the most tomboyish girl that anyone knew. If I were growing up today, I am sure that my superiors, teachers, whatever, would have channeled me to go into the transgender movement. That fortunately did not happen. And 80% of children who do think about becoming transgender in their middle school years do not become transgender adults. That said, this is a violation of the Supreme Court decision that was recently made on expanding Title IX rights. This is a loss of women's rights to privacy, privilege, and dignity. If we are to have this discussion just about bathrooms, then create one, single bathrooms in all our public buildings that anyone can use, that they don't have to share. But I believe the passage of this ordinance will result in the reduction of rights for women and girls, and especially girls in playing athletics, of which I do- I urge you not to pass this, not to further divide us, but to have us all treat each other as equal human beings and deserve the respect thereof. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next to be recognized is Becky Loughlin. You are unmuted. Please introduce yourself and your municipality.
Yes, this is Becky Loughlin from Valley Township. And I think that if we are really concerned about the welfare of our sexually confused people and our transgenders, why wouldn't we give them nonjudgmental counseling rather than encouraging them in whatever decision they may think is good at the time? You can't reverse these surgeries. You can't reverse the effects of the alternative hormones. And there are many that I wish they had never started this. And now their lives are gone because they can't reverse. And if, and I'm just afraid there's going to be good people hauled off to jail because of perceived discrimination. And it's not right. We're just, I think Mr. LaRusso is right and is creating a great division. So anyway, I, most of us hold nothing against these individuals who are transgenders or question their gender. They're loved by God, just like God loves all of us. So I would, these folks need our, need our help in deciding whether they should go ahead with things like this or not. And in my opinion, we are withholding that help with this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for that public comment. Finally, we have Addie. Addie, you are unmuted. Please introduce yourself and your municipality.
Yes, hello. My name is Addison Barnett. I'm in Pemexville, Chester County. I am a United States Marine Corps veteran. I served my country honorably. And I, you know, I wanted to protect my country. And I just ask that you try to protect me. I've seen plenty of other queer folks get bullied out of their workplaces, out of social spaces. I've seen, you know, queer people get discriminated on a national level. When I was in the service, there were many people who felt that they could not speak up about who they were. And we need more protections. We need people who are willing to stand up and say, this is not right. We shouldn't allow this to happen in private. And if the government as a whole isn't going to do it, I'm grateful that the county is willing to step up and say, no more. Thank you. I yield my time.
To speak is Susan Kearney Strup. You are unmuted. You're currently muted. Mute yourself.
Okay, now can you hear me?
I can. Go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. I'm Susan Strout from Oxford Township. I was moved by all the things that were said this morning. I didn't expect such an outpouring of positive things for, you know, this ordinance because I have heard a lot of things against it. The one thing that's been said a lot is how a lot of people were bullied and in the trans commu, or I'm sorry, the LGBTQ community. But the one thing too, I think you should consider, a lot of people have also been bullied who are conservatives. And we've seen that a lot in recent years, especially. If there's fear that's created, a lot of times, it's done by rhetoric. And like, at least one of the speakers, several speakers have said that, that we are not against, you know, LGBTQ trans. I mean, may not be something that we would choose for ourselves. And as long as it's adults who are choosing this for themselves, we're fine with that. And I think most of us would not harm any of those individuals. And I don't think that we believe that the trans individuals are going to harm us, say with the bathroom issue, but I think it's the abuse of it. People who may decide to go into the bathroom, say as a male who says he identifies as that, but isn't really from that community. I think that's more what people may be concerned about. I think overall, I think that talking together like this is a very good, good thing because I think we can all get to know each other. You know, I know people too who are transgender and gay. And I know that there's a lot more people now that, that, that do come out because of the way, there is more open speech about it. But I am against this ordinance because of the things that Felice had said and some of the others. And as the attorney also says, some very good, makes some very good points about litigation that, and it is really scary to think that there would be just volunteers who probably are more from, you know, one community than another that may not make good judgments or may not have the experience to do the investigations. I think most of us who are speaking against it are probably not people who are going to be discriminating against people. So I don't know. But you'll make the decision that you want. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Chairman, I see no other requests to speak.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Berman. We're going to expedite things a little bit. If Director Franklin, you're okay with it? Can we do your presentation at the end of the meeting? Is that okay with you? I know you've been standing there for quite a while. Okay. So we're going to have a motion adopted to the day's agenda with the change of Director Franklin speaking in pride about her health department to the end of the meeting. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? All's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Up next, we have our consent agenda. A single vote will approve the following routine items of business without discussion unless an individual agenda item is requested by commissioner. We have a co-op agreement for the International Paper Company, an O cooperation agreement with Department of Human Services Domestic Relations, intergovernmental agreement with Family Court, intergovernmental agreement with Domestic Relations, again, the Sheriff's Department, Resolution BOC 6125, Health Department licenses, BOC 6225, grant application for the Commonwealth, some contracts, two grants, the HR agenda. The Finance Department has budget change 1425. And we have the vouchers that submitted by controller. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Up next, ordinance 2025-03, Sister Friends. Where'd she go? She's over there. Colleen? All right, so-
It's a paper copy. Sorry.
We'll get him an agenda. Sister Friends, you want to talk about the ordinance establishing a county-wide nondiscrimination requirements for employment, housing, and public accommodations?
Yes, good morning.
And I'd imagine the board's going to have some questions for you.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. This is, we're putting forth for your consideration, ordinance 2025-03. The ordinance will create the Chester County Human Relations Commission, which will be empowered to receive, investigate, and adjudicate complaints of discrimination. The ordinance sets forth procedures for filing complaints, conducting investigations and hearings, and provides remedies. This ordinance is intended to support and supplement existing federal, state, and municipal nondiscrimination protections and to ensure that consistent protections are available locally in Chester County. The proposed Chester County Human Relations Ordinance affirms the county's commitment to equal opportunity for all residents and prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, or citizenship status, sex, gender identity or expression, sexual orientation, marital or familial status, disability, source of income, age, veteran status, use of support animals and/or mechanical aids, or status as a victim of domestic or sexual violence. A summary was in, was included in the notice in the newspaper and a full copy has been available on the county's website for review. And I will take your question.
Just one quick one before I turn over to Commissioner Rowe. Is in any way, does this address any laws regarding bathrooms?
Not specifically, no.
Okay. Commissioner Rowe, go ahead.
Excuse me.
Commissioner Rowe, it's your time.
Solicitor Friends, I just want to thank you for the many, many hours of my questions that you've already answered. So I'll try to keep this as brief as I can. The commissioners on this commission will be human beings and therefore could get things wrong, right? We're all human. What happens if the commissioners deem something discrimination and then somebody wants to challenge that ruling to a higher entity? How would that work?
Well, this commission is governed by the longstanding local agency law. So the person who's aggrieved by a decision of the commission can appeal that to the Court of Common Pleas through a standard procedure known as a petition for review. And then the Court of Common Pleas would be able to review the decision.
Okay. So if I were to make a frivolous claim, not within this commission, but separately, and a judge somewhere determined that my claim was frivolous, that judge could then determine that I would need to pay the legal fees of the defendant in that case. Will that same protection be afforded to defendants if it is later determined on appeal that a claim was frivolous?
So I first want to back up and say that the awarding of legal fees for what you're calling a frivolous claim, it's not automatic. And without a specific, you know, case or law, it's hard to speculate. It's hard to give a yes or no answer. I'll put it that way. Sorry to be a lawyer. But, and I also want to note that what's really important in this ordinance is there is a jurisdictional review right off the bat that the commission will be required to examine the complaint to see if it is indeed discrimination within the jurisdiction of the commission. It is possible through the process that the awarding of fees could happen for bad faith, is a long answer to your question.
But then my question is, who would pay those fees if it's determined that the claimant brought forth something that a judge later determines is frivolous?
In that fact pattern, it would most likely be the claimant. Or yes, the complainant, yes.
Okay, got it. Okay, well, shopkeepers and business owners, okay, no, I already asked that. Have, you mentioned the Court of Common Pleas. Has this been discussed with the president judge of our Court of Common Pleas yet?
I'm not aware of whether or not it has been.
Okay, got it. One thing I like about this is that it does have protections for people who have deeply held religious beliefs, right? So this is not quite the same as what we're seeing on a national- So this is not quite the same as what we're seeing on a national level out in places like Colorado. Who determines, though, what deeply held religious beliefs are, or what is central to a deeply held religious belief?
So, I apologize, I'm going to correct you. The term is sincerely held religious belief, which I think is, is a crucial word change. Since, the term sincerely held religious belief is a, is a very well litigated term in federal and state-led case law. And the, the commission would be guided by that.
Got it. Okay.
And it's, as you and I have discussed, it's very, very fact-specific to each case.
Okay. Hypothetically, a secular youth athletics league, so not a religious youth athletics league, but a secular public one, how would this affect trans girls who want to participate in girl's sports?
Trans girls who want to participate in girl's sports. Again, each case is very fact-specific, and I would really caution against giving you a yes or no answer, because part of the point of this commission is that it is local, and it gives a chance for neighbors to talk to their neighbors with the benefit of, of a neutral moderator, right? So that if someone feels discriminated against, or if someone on the other side feels that they're not discriminating, they're acting in good faith, they have the chance to talk to each other with their neighbors, you know, neighbors, in a mediated discussion. I can't really answer your question specifically. What I can also say is in terms of the transgender issue, which is really minimizing it, this is actively being litigated all over the country in federal and state courts, and it's, it's not something I can give you an answer to right now, because each, each situation it could be applied in is so different from any other. I do know that the Supreme Court of the United States has granted cert on a couple of cases that will probably be landmark in this area. And although the commission doesn't have to follow federal law, because this is, this is Chester County and state law, they will most likely, I would assume, be guided by those decisions.
I understand that this ordinance covers a lot more than just protections for the LGBT community. But as you heard from the public comments, that seems to be the focus here today. My question is, what protections for the LGBT community in this, are in this ordinance that are not elsewhere in state law, federal law, or any regulations thereof?
The short answer is none. The longer answer is that through Supreme Court case law, the discrimination on the basis of sex has been, has been expanded to include gender identity and gender expression. Similarly, in state law, the Pennsylvania Human Rights Act does not explicitly include those phrases, but in regulations that were promulgated pursuant to the act, those, those terms have been included as well. So in those areas, what this ordinance does is protect them explicitly, rather than through extension.
Okay. Let's talk about the cost of this. It's my understanding that only $500 has been allocated for this entire ordinance and resulting commission on an annual basis. Do you expect that this will only cost $500 of non-staff time, outside of staff time?
Based on my research with, speaking with other commissions, in particular, there's one woman from Lehigh County who's an advocate in this area. Lehigh County established theirs a number of years ago, and they didn't even get a budget until last year. And she said, we really don't spend any money. It's all people who are impassioned, passionate about this, and they really do things on their own. And it's, it's using count, existing county resources. For example, we've discussed having the meetings at the library on those nights where the library is already open at night. So we won't be, you know, turning on the light, spending additional electricity, things like that.
Okay. If this ordinance gets a lot of use, right? If the commission ends up doing a lot more than we anticipate, do you think you may need to hire more attorneys in your office to accommodate that?
Well, you know what I want to say, right? Yeah, yeah. In, in the situation you have described, if this is a functioning and effective commission that needs a lot of legal support, the answer to your question is, is yes. We really don't know what this is going to look like. They may not come to my office for legal support very often.
Yeah. Are you able to cite specific examples of times when this commission was needed, but for lack of the commission, someone was not able to find justice?
Well, I think there's a phrase, justice delayed is justice denied. And what, what statistics and the research show is that with the EEOC, the federal equivalent, and the PHRC, the state equivalent, those cases take a long time to resolve. So again, the, the point of this is there's very short response times in here that I may come to regret. But.
I wondered about that.
But I think that's important, because, you know, someone is hurting in the moment, and they would like to be responded to in the moment. So I, I think that is providing a need that, that the federal and state law don't provide.
Understood. Will somebody be able to use this ordinance and then also go to the PHRA, or go to the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission in addition? Or do they kind of exclude each other?
So technically, yes, although built into the ordinance is the process that the commission is required to notify the EEOC and the PHRC of the dual or triple jurisdiction over an issue. And we're also required to tell the complainant about that.
Got it. And then this gets appealed to the court, not the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, correct?
Correct.
All right, got it. I'd like to talk about the source of income aspect of this ordinance. Is it constitutional to restrict someone's freedom to contract by prescribing that the sources of income they have to accept when it comes to the lease of an apartment, for example?
It is.
Okay. What's the burden of proof that's going to be required by the parties that argue before this commission? Is it a preponderance of the evidence? Is it something more than that? What, what is that burden of proof?
It's a preponder, it's a preponderance standard. And, and built into that also, before you even get to there, there's a burden shifting that happens. If anybody's familiar with, with this kind of legislation, or this, how these cases work out, it's often, the complainant has to show a prima facie case, which is just, it probably is true. It's the same standard that the district attorney has to go into when they're doing a preliminary hearing. It's not high burden. And then it's on the, the respondent to articulate a nondiscriminatory reason for whatever it is that they're alleged to have done. And then it goes back to the complainant to show that either that's a pretext or, or something else. So there's a lot that goes into before you even get to the commission looking at everything. But it is, it is preponderance.
When, when we as a, a election board or a commission board have our own little hearings, we are not bound by the rules of evidence. Will this commission be bound by the rules of evidence, or the rules of civil procedure, or any of those rules?
The rules of civil procedure, no. They are, they are strictly, well, they are, yes and no. They're bound by the ordinance, and there, there is a fair amount of procedures in the ordinance. And then, and sort of, as a practitioner, when you don't know what to do, you rely on the rules of civil procedure if, if there's nothing specific. So the answer is sort of yes and no. The rules of evidence, no, they don't strictly apply.
Okay. So this ordinance contains a "ban the box" component that will not allow prospective employers to ask about prior criminal convictions. And I think there's some merit to that. I have some reservations. But if an employer hires someone with a prior criminal conviction, and then he or she then commits a similar crime against that employer, something that's relevant to that, you know, particular job that they've taken, what are the employer's remedies? And is there any chance the county will be held liable for that?
So I'm glad you asked this question, because I think "ban the box" is misunderstood. It is not a once and forever ban on asking about it. It is prior to the initial interview. And then once you move past that stage, in state law and in this ordinance, you are allowed to consider and look at a person's criminal background as regards to their suitability for employment. So let's say, I might be stepping on a landmine, but let's say somebody is going to work a cash register, and they have an arrest for that exact thing in the past. As an employer, you would be allowed to consider that criminal history and make a decision based on that.
Okay. And then, will they have, will those employers have to then consult with lawyers, though, just to make sure that they're not overstepping their boundaries? I mean, I, I assume this will have a chilling effect on their willingness to even ask about prior criminal convictions.
Well, it shouldn't, because they can ask after the initial interview, and they can perform a background check, as long as it's, and, and they can look at, they can consider what crimes are suitable for, for employment.
If an owner of a business, or like a shopkeeper, thinks that they have sustained reputational damages as a result of something that went through this commission, do they have any remedies?
They would have any remedy available to them already under the law.
Okay. So I understand that the members of this commission cannot hold an elected position within a party, right?
That's correct.
So I personally like that, but I just want to make sure that that's passing constitutional muster. What's the, what's the thought process behind that? Is that the same as we use for, like, majesty, for judges, elected judges in this?
Well, it's, it's in the Pennsylvania Human Rights Act as, as well, that members of that commission cannot hold political parties. And it is, it's very common. Many, many positions, elected positions, have restrictions on them as to what other employment there could be. For example, you can't, I'm not going to pick specific ones, but you couldn't hold, you know, a county position and a state position at the same time. I believe that you can't be a school board member and hold a military position. Josh is nodding at me. So this, very common to, to restrict that.
Okay, got it. What constitutes sufficient administrative and legal support from the county solicitor's office? I just want to know the extent to which your budget will be stretched.
Well, I mean, there's, there's, you know, you can see what's written into the ordinance about response times and things like that. And my office is already well set up for that, because we do house the right-to-know process. So we're used to responding to certain things on quick timelines, and we're already, we're already working on a process there. Sufficient administrative support? I mean, it's an undefined term on purpose. My, my lawyerly statement to you would be whatever we can do to support the commission so that it's doing what it, so that it can respond to the need.
It's my understanding that the commissioners will still be, although they're not paid, they will still be entitled to, like, mileage reimbursements. Whose budget does that come out of? Is that this $500 line item? Is it your budget? Where, where does that money, where's that money coming from?
So the, the, as the ordinance is written, there's the $500, and then there's any additional necessary expenses. So it would be in addition. And as I've said, you know, what we've seen is that these ordinances don't incur a lot of expenses. So it would, my assumption, initially at least, would be that it would be rolled into that $500.
Could we get sued? Do you expect any lawsuits coming from the passage of this ordinance? Is there a potential for us to get into a costly lawsuit?
For the county, too.
Yeah.
I mean, there's always a potential for someone to sue the county, right? This is a lawful ordinance. The commissioners are the executive and the legislative branch of the county. And, and as such, the commissioners, the Board of Commissioners do have the power to promulgate ordinances. I mean, we, we have them, lately, we've had them on our agendas almost every meeting, I think. And more importantly, the Pennsylvania Human Rights Act specifically gives counties and local governments in Pennsylvania the power to create these commissions. So the legality of the commission itself is not in question. Could someone who has a complaint filed against them say, oh, and also, this piece of the ordinance is unconstitutional? Yes, they could. I'm confident that as the law exists right now, today, it is constitutional. It complies with all federal and state laws.
Got it. The members of this commission are going to be tasked with investigations, but the average person doesn't have a lot of training in investigation? So are we going to pay for trainings for the commissioners to learn how to properly do investigations?
That's not the plan right now. I've been communicating with people who are active in this space about, about training. And I think what's, what's important is that the, the person I've been speaking to who runs Lehigh County's, well, she's in Lehigh County's commission, I don't know if she runs it. She says they get, they've hardly had any complaints, and when they do, they're, they're mostly not jurisdictional, meaning they don't take place in Lehigh County, or they're not covered by the ordinance, or it's not discrimination. And this is a person who's an advocate, who goes around to the state advocating for this. And she said to me, you know, we hardly, we, you know, most people are just complaining, and it's not actually discrimination. So she's going to, she's, I have her lined up to train, and, you know, as things evolve, we'll, we'll have to see how it goes. And again, I want to go back to that, the whole point of this is that it's neighbors talking to neighbors about their problems. And I don't know how much, you need a certain amount of training, but a lot of it's common sense.
Okay. I understand studies will also be conducted by this commission. In my experience, studies are, I mean, time-intensive, at, at the very least. What, what funds are we going to provide for these studies to be done? How often do they have to be done? Is that, whose discretion is that?
The way the ordinance is drafted is that it would be in the discretion of the Board of Commissioners to fund those studies. I, I can't speculate as to what they would cost. This is, this is a new commission, and I, you know, as we've been talking about it, this is a first step in a process that's going to evolve over the years. So I really don't know what they will look like.
Got it. Okay. So it's my understanding that the only two areas, the only two classes of people that are not currently protected under state and federal laws and regulations that are in this ordinance are source of income and the "ban the box" provision. Is that correct?
No. It's the source of income and the victims of sexual and domestic abuse.
But I thought that the Violence Against Women Act.
Yeah, yes. As we've discussed, it, it, that, and I, this is the, you know, this is the, the turn, the legal term, the victims of sexual and domestic abuse are, they're protected through a patchwork of protections. And this is, again, an explicit statement of that. The "ban the box" is in state law.
It's already in state law? Really? So in Chester County, all of the employers in Chester County are not going to have to change anything? There won't be sweeping changes as a result of the "ban the box" provision in this?
That's my understanding, that we're just, we, we are creating a local, a, a local venue for whatever the ordinance is regulating.
Okay, got it. Yeah, it's, it was my understanding that most of the protected classes in here are protected through a patchwork and not just a, like a blanket provision like we have in front of us today. Most of it is a patchwork of state regulations, state law, federal regulations, federal law, right? Different case laws.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, here, I'll answer it this way. We're, we're not going out on a limb with anything. The only thing we're doing differently that's not regulated by state law is the source of income.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate it. I'm sure the members of the public appreciate it, too.
Conversation. Commissioner Muswitz?
Well, Colleen and I have been going back and forth on this for a while, so a lot of my questions have been answered. I just, I'm, I think it's important that the public know that we already have anti-discrimination ordinances in Chester County. And would you just say, do you know how many municipalities have that at this moment?
I'm aware of Phoenixville, Downingtown, Westchester Borough.
And do you know how long they've been in effect?
I think Phoenixville's was 2017. I think that your neighbor next to you was mayor of Downingtown when Downingtown passed it, so he'll have to do the math. And I'm, I'm not aware of Westchester Borough's timeline, but it's not recent.
Yeah. So my point is, they've already been out there in certain municipalities, and, and there have been no issues. And from what I understand, no real cost of anything. But it is a place where people can go to resolve differences. Is that correct?
That's my understanding as well.
Okay. I'm good. I've asked so many questions of you on this ordinance, so I will, I will leave you alone. Thank you.
Solicitor, I'll just mention, I appreciate you and your team working on this. When we started talking about this, I didn't expect it. When we started talking about this, I didn't expect it to be such a regional, if not national thing. This county's been on the forefront of women's rights going back way over 100 years and getting to know people in the business community, people with nonprofits. We had two chambers of commerce site on to support this ordinance in Southern Chester County and Phoenixville. We have a lot of folks, our members of this community that contribute both from a taxpaying standpoint and socially in our communities. It means a lot to me that Chester County, and I believe the population here wants to be a place where people feel safe and protected and want government action to codify those rights if at any time the federal government might have reservations about doing those things. I think it makes Chester County a very special place. It's important to me that whatever somebody is, religion, gender, whatever, they're treated equally under the law. And I think that should always bear a goal at the local level, the state level and the federal level. To the degree this ordinance helps to do that, I am ecstatic that Chester, I can be a place that is welcoming to everybody who is willing to contribute to this community in a positive way. And I appreciate everyone working really hard on this. It means the world to me.
Any questions?
Any other que, that was, what's your answer to that question? Seems like, are you, is there a question coming in? She's like, wait, sit down. Do we have any other questions for the solicitor friends? All right. What's that? Comments? You have a comment? Go ahead. Say, say Maxwell, I got something to say. All right. Cave, a motion to approve. Commissioner Muswitz? All right, I'll second the motion. And I'll, I'm sorry, we gotta work the practice. And I'll second. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes. As recently as 60 years ago, some of you in this room were alive then, my own marriage, as it exists today, was illegal in the American South. Even today, right here in Pennsylvania, I'm sure that there are people who disapprove of interracial marriage. I don't want myself or my family to experience discrimination of any kind. And I don't want any of you, the people of Chester County, to experience discrimination either. And I'm comforted to know that I have legal remedies at my disposal if I do experience that kind of thing. And you do, too. Legal protections already exist so that the LGBT community, racial minorities, disabled people, women, survivors of domestic violence, survivors of sexual violence and veterans and others can enjoy protections against discrimination and be made whole if and when they experience that. They enjoy these protections under authorities much higher than anything we could even create here today. And you've heard of some of them. The Civil Rights Act, the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Violence Against Women Act, the Fair Housing Act, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, EEOC for short, the Pregnancy Discrimination Act, the Pregnant Workers Fairness, Fairness Act, Bostock v. Clayton County, Georgia, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act, and so many more. So with this in mind, I then have to ask myself if I'm creating yet another layer of county government to protect people from things that they're already protected from, am I being a good steward of taxpayer dollars? That's a question I have to ask, not just with this, but really any ordinance that we are discussing as commissioners. I find it difficult to believe that this will only cost $500. I understand that Lehigh Valley, Lehigh County has kept theirs very cost effective. We're a bigger, we're a bigger county than they are. This will definitely require some significant staff time. It already has. I think you said it was, you told me privately it was 40 to 80 hours of staff time already. Could be more. And there could be lawsuits that come from this. Again, I hope not. Lawsuits are very expensive. I know how much they pay lawyers. I don't want to pay that, but that is a, that is a serious possibility. So folks, as a, as a county commissioner, I have a duty to make sure we're only spending as much money as, as we responsibly can. I have a duty to use fiscal restraint at all times, even when it's unpopular to do so. I have a duty to the taxpayers, including the taxpayers who fit the descriptions of these protected classes. So for those reasons, I will be voting no on this ordinance and I want to thank you for hearing me out and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Commissioner Rowe. Commissioner Muswitz?
Hi, everybody. Bear with me because I have like notes upon notes. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm a bit older than my colleagues and so I have seen a lot of changes over the years, some good, some very bad. So while I know that, and I have to say, I know there are strong feelings and I love that we can come here and express them respectfully. Respectfully is key right now. But I want to be clear in why I support this ordinance. I support it because it protects everyone in Chester County, not just one group or another. And I say that's so important because there's an issue that came up just about a month ago, maybe a little longer. And I will share this with you. A Guatemalan man who came here as a child, his parents brought him here to, because there was a lot of violence, and they became citizens. And he is a citizen today and is raising his own family. And just recently, within the last two to three months, his lease was up and the landlord doubled his rent for fear that he was going to create a situation where ICE would come in. He could not afford that. That's discrimination in housing. Redlining is discrimination in housing and that just occurred two years ago in Delaware. So I know that people, we live in this amazing county and I love my county and I love the people in it. I don't care if they disagree with me or not. I do. I like people and I love everyone here. But this is really happening and it's happening behind the scenes. You don't see it. You just don't see it. It's not about one group. It's, it's about protecting women. I was discriminated against as a woman. It's about protecting Black and Brown communities, LGBTQ plus, as well as people of faith, people with disabilities like my niece, veterans who have been kicked out of the military recently, women veterans, families and seniors. No one should be denied a job, a home or basic services because of who they are. This ordinance creates a fair process so that if discrimination happens, people know they are protected or have a home to go to. Lately, there's a lot of nervousness out here. As I said before, it may be hidden, it's there. Things are happening in the federal government. We are starting to lose our rights. We have to make sure that Chester County residents know we are here for them. So I feel it is my responsibility as a county commissioner to make sure that our county feels safe and respected and included. And that's why I'm voting for this ordinance today. Thank you.
I think she nailed it. All right, let's vote. We have a motion, a second floor, also favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We have a bunch of stuff to vote on, like contracts for like the Mass and Fine Center and things like that. I'm gonna maybe take, can we take a two minute break? Mr. Barman, for anyone to use the bathroom? And if you want to hear us vote on stuff, we'll be back in a couple minutes. All right, up next on our agenda, resolution, BOC 6025, a resolution addressing, addressing that Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and their lack of funding for cannabis.
So moved.
A discussion? Also favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Up next, contracts. Director Large, it's been waiting forever.
Good morning, commissioners. Eve Large, Director of CYF. I have eight items for your consideration this afternoon. The first, first one is a contract amendment extending the term of the contract with Presley Ridge for $622,550. This is for in-home services, visitation, life skills and the Positive Parenting Program. Second contract is with Chester County Intermediate Unit. This is also a contract amendment, $1,168,700 extending the term for two years. These are for our program liaisons and the attend program. Community Youth and Women's Alliance Contract Amendment, $523,800, also extending the contract term for two years. This is for the Parents as Teachers Program. Family Services of Chester County Contract Amendment, $1,168,700. This is additional funding for the Familius Unitis Program. Lincoln Center for Family and Youth, $270,000. This is a new contract for the Safe and Healthy Homes Program. Deveraux Foundation, $988,200 with a contract term of two years. This is for our truancy program for elementary age children. Gateway Horse Works, $245,800, contract term for two years. This is for youth 13 to 18 years involved with our agency or juvenile probation. And then RTM LLC, $3,130,600, a contract term for two years. This is a community-based program for male and females, 10 to 20 currently involved with the Juvenile Probation Office.
Thank you, Director Large.
Thank you.
All right, one more contract. Director Bakavitz, HIDD. Did I miss you, Lauren?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Pat Bakavitz, Director of the County's Department of Human Services. The, the Department of Mental Health, Intellectual Development and Disabilities has one item on today's agenda that is a no-cost amendment for the, with the Chester County Suicide Prevention Task Force. This is for this current program year.
Thank you, Director Bakavitz. Cave, a motion to approve today's contracts.
Second.
A discussion? Also favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Grants. Aging. But opposite.
Good afternoon.
Oh, sorry, so you?
Pat Bakavitz, Director of the County's Department of Human Services. The Department, the Department of Aging has one item on today's grants agenda. That is the annual grant contract from the Pennsylvania Department of Aging in the amount of $2,494,671. It's somewhat of a temporary or preliminary, so this is for this current upcoming year.
You want to do the rest of yours, Stu?
Well, we'll let Eve do hers.
Okay.
But I'll do those after.
Good morning, commissioners. Eve Large, Director of CYF. I have one grant. I have one grant this afternoon. It is from the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, thirty-two million four hundred and twenty-eight thousand and one hundred and fifty-five dollars. This provides funding for our department and for purchased in-home services and placement costs for J P O and the youth center.
Big grant. Thank you, Director Large.
Thank you.
Director Bakavitz, can you top thirty-four million, thirty-two million dollars?
Department, I cannot today, Commissioner. I cannot today. The Department of Human Services has one grant award, and that's from the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars to help with our human needs network. And then the Department of Mental Health, Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities has one grant, small grant, five hundred dollars, maybe the least, lowest grant of the year, from the Southeast Regional Community Support Program for an important enhancement to the community support program, providing training for peer supports.
All right, if you don't have use of that five hundred bucks, call Colleen, okay? All right, Director Franklin.
Good afternoon. Jean Franklin, Director of the Health Department. I have one grant for your consideration. It is a renewal. It is from the Pennsylvania Department of Health in the amount of one million two hundred and four thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. This is for our Women Infant and Children Program that provides supplemental nutrition to children up to age five at nutrition risk. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Have a motion approved today's grant awards.
So moved.
A discussion? Also, favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. How do we one-handed, Director Franklin? Do you want to do your presentation? All right, why don't you come up since it's here? Vows must stand there for three and a half hours. You can share. So the only thing left on our agenda is Director Franklin's description of her hard work at the Health Department and then some Commissioner reports, and then we'll have lunch.
Yes. I lost my audience.
You were, I just, you were over there excited.
I was. So, good afternoon, everyone. I am Jean Franklin. I am super proud to be the Director of the Chester County Health Department here. And I'm, there are a ton of programs and services offered through the Health Department, but I am going to cover only the clinical services today. So just, I am a fan of public health. There you go. And I could talk to, talk to you for hours, however, I am going to, David, will you just advance for me? That'd be super helpful. Give you a quick lesson on public health in, for Pennsylvania. So we're Commonwealth, we're decentralized. Not every county has a health department. In fact, there are only seven county health departments in the Commonwealth and four municipal health departments, which are really city health departments. And combined, they cover forty-three percent of the Pennsylvania population. So we are fortunate here, on a very slim budget, we can do so much more for our residents than the state. As a matter of fact, the state does not have the capacity to provide local public health as the residents need it. Here in Chester County, along with ten others, we have it. And we've had it since nineteen sixty-eight here, so fifty-seven years strong here in Chester County. Again, we offer many programs. These are the programs. Each has multiple services on it within it, and I'm only going to cover a handful of them. So again, tuberculosis is our first clinical service I'm going to cover. It is basically a disease that has been around forever. And yes, it exists here in Chester County. It is caused by a microbacterium tuberculosis. It spreads through the air. It is typically in individuals' lungs. However, it can attack any organ in the body, and we have seen it here. It is currently on the rise, again, in the United States as well as here. There's two types of T B. Inactive means it's just sitting in your body, and it's not really causing any disease, or active when it converts from inactive to active. Our services, we start with surveillance and investigation, and our nurses do this work. They review every single positive test case in, of tuberculosis in the county. They investigate every one of them, and then that typically leads to transitioning into the clinical services. We do the testing for specific situations. We don't do general testing because physicians have the capacity to do that. We do testing, for example, for investigations or for immigration purposes. We offer treatment. This is not an easy treatment for folks. We provide the medication at no cost. We have to observe every time they take their medication, literally visually observe that they have taken it. Sorry. I know, I know, I talk with my hands, David. And folks are generally on medication from three to nine months if it's inactive, but six to twelve months if it's inactive tuberculosis. And there's a handful of pills folks have to take. So this is very challenging, which is why we have our very passionate nurses following them. Next. Sexually transmitted diseases, infections that are spread through sexual contact, as we know, they can be a bacteria, they can be a virus, they can be a parasite, and they can cause true harm if they go untreated. Our sexually transmitted infection clinics also begin with surveillance. We review every single test result for sexually transmitted diseases. We focus on chlamydia, gonorrhea, syphilis, and H I V, because those are the highest occurrence in our county, actually in the Commonwealth. And we bring individuals in to do testing as well as provide treatment. The only one we do not provide treatment for is our, is H I V. We have specialists for that, that we refer folks to. Women Infant Children Program. This is our, the nutrition supplement program that you heard a grant for this morning. It is for low-income people who are at nutritional risk. It covers the pregnant women, the postpartum women, breastfeeding women, infants and children all the way up to age five. It is a clinic because we do some biometrics, and we tailor their food services, their food, access to food to their individual needs. So it is a very unique food package. The cute little rectangle is actually almost like a credit card. They receive their benefits on, and they can shop at specific stores for specific foods. We also do breastfeeding support in our clinic, nutritional education, and we do wraparound. They get referred for vaccinations, they get referred for early intervention, whatever else they need, we're going to connect them to those services. And lastly, immunizations. It is a safe and effective public health strategy that we have used for a long time in this country, as well as globally, to protect our immune system. It actually, we, the vaccine trains the immune system to respond accordingly to the diseases. So we have immunization clinics all throughout the year. When we're not in the season we are now, we call them our lifespan vaccinations, meaning we cover from birth to older age and all of them. We are very often referred to through private physicians because they don't carry all the vaccines. We do, we carry every single vaccine available. In twenty twenty-four, we administered fourteen thousand six hundred, or six hundred and seventy-three vaccinations in Chester County. Majority of those are at no cost, very few costs, and that is all done by nurses who do this day in and day out. We have the absolute best nurses doing these vaccinations. And I will end with a shameless plug for our fall vaccine clinics. They are held throughout the county. I know this is a little small to read, but if you go to chesco.org/health, right on our homepage, you'll see an option to book a vaccine appointment, no cost. If you have insurance, bring it, because we can get reimbursed, but you will not pay. Next. This is very busy. It is every single hour of our clinics. I don't want you to have to read this, so very simply, just go to our website, and more importantly, call our lovely staff, six one zero three four four six two five five, and they can answer any and all questions or connect you to an organization who can support your needs. Commissioners, I appreciate your support of a local health department. I've said it time and time again, public health happens locally, we do it efficiently, and we are not a primary care provider, so we are not duplicating services here in Chester County. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Director Large, you want to walk? All right. Commissioners' reports. Commissioner Ralph.
Don't have much to report. I just want to thank the people who got up and spoke during the first public comment and the people who are about to speak during the second public comment. We had a lot of first timers here today. It takes a lot of courage to get up there and talk, so I just want to recognize that and thank you for that.
Commissioner Moskowitz.
I also want to reiterate with, Commissioner Rowe said it's good to have people engaged in government because that's how it works. We won't always agree, but we can express our opinions and our thoughts. I think that's really important. And I don't know, last weekend, there was so much going on around this county. I think I hit eight places. It was crazy everywhere, but it was a lot of fun. And so, a lot of stuff going on, we have to enjoy the moments here. So look at the calendar and try to get out to something this weekend. There's a lot going on, too. Thanks.
Nothing for me. Mr. Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are at the point set aside for public comment on non-agenda items. We remind everyone that public comments who relate to matters germane to the Board of County Commissioners. Items that are not within the authority or purview of the Board of County Commissioners should not be included in public comment. Comments should be directed to the Board, and there is a three-minute time limit per person. We'll provide a thirty-second warning, let you know when your time expires. If you'd like to make a public comment, if you're in person, please come to the podium, state your name and municipality before speaking. If you're connected through Zoom, you can raise your hand or plus star nine on your telephone keypad. We'll start off with public comment within the chamber first, before moving on to comment with those elected, connected via Zoom, and we'll start right here. Please introduce yourself and your municipality before speaking.
Sandy Bowman, Chesco. I will never give you my municipality again, since non-residents are not allowed or allowed to come up here and only give their county. I consider that to be discriminatory against those of us that live in this county. I also find it odd that the description of this new commission was that it gives people an opportunity to have a conversation. Most people probably don't consider a conversation when a subpoena is involved. So I also would like to say that I find it odd, I've noticed this over the years, that when an outburst comes from a certain sect of the community, you're quick to shut it down, and when it comes from another sect of the community, you allow it. I also think that that's discriminatory. And so I think that you should be very quick to stop outbursts evenly, irregardless of what side it's coming from. So I'd like to make that request. There was one more thing, but I can't think of it. So I will end it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Nancy?
Nancy Lordback, West Goshen Township. On Monday, I received information that our polling place has been changed. I got it from an email, and they changed our polling place to go to another polling place, which happens to be the largest polling place in all of West Goshen. So N one and N four, N four is the largest in West Goshen, should be voting at the same place. So I was very upset, and I want to know, how am I going to let all the voters know? At this point, I was notified by my zone leader, and I'm not even sure if the Republican Committee people know that this polling place was changed. Now, I do know in the past, because I used to work at the Chester County Democratic Committee, and in the past, Voter Services would call me and they would ask me, who are the committee people in this precinct? Because we're going to do a polling place change. And they would talk to them, and they would get their input as to where the polling place should be changed to. And I received it as a fait accompli, and so I was a little concerned about that. So I come to you with three questions. They are, what date will be the last day that they will decide my polling place? Oh, four questions, I'm sorry. Will there be signs printed to direct the voters toward the new polling place out on the, out on the main road to say, this is where N one goes to vote now? Is this a permanent change? And I was told by Jeffrey at Voter Services that Voter Services will be mailing to everybody, but I just want to be sure that's the case, that they're mailing to everybody in N one, West Goshen N one, that their polling place has changed. So if you could help me with that. Thank you.
For our best, thank you, Nancy.
Hello. I'm Richard Chalfant, lifelong resident of Chester County. And I'm here concerning a property that the county owns. And you have, yes, that's it. It is a, one of our historic properties and in danger. I also represent Friends of Bernard Station. We have been restoring the original Underground Railroad station on the property. They're separate, used to be part of the county property. Anyway, this, this building is in back of the Bacopsen home, and it was a part of the Underground Railroad. The, it was a place to be hidden, was a place of refuge. And the house itself was the home of the last conductor, surviving conductor of the Underground Railroad. The county owns it. It's been shut down for years, not in good shape, but not in bad shape. And we've got a petition rolling to save the house. Everyone wants to save the house. The end of last week, I got a call that there were people in there taking something outdoors and windows and so on. I went over to investigate, and they say that it's part of, they've been, I guess, hired, I'm assuming, but I'm not sure, to take out any lead-based material? But I don't think there's been a real, I don't think there's been a demolition process followed here. And we would like to save the house, but, and, and we've been building, getting petitions signed, thinking, well, we'll come to you with that information later. But this is preempted by what's going on there now. So I'm coming to you to ask to save the house and to stop the destruction, if you can.
Thank you, sir. This is, I would imagine this is anew to all three of us, so we're all looking at this right away.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Carrie Steer, Phoenixville Borough, President of LGBT Equality Alliance of Chester County. I want to thank the Commissioners and the county today for passing the nondiscrimination ordinance. First off, as Commissioner Moskowitz said, this is a ordinance that covers everybody in Chester County, not just the LGBTQ plus community. But to come and, to comment on the specific sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression parts of that ordinance, I know myself, my family, and I know members of our community can now breathe a small sigh of relief that we will have a course of action should we face discrimination here in Chester County, because federal law is the floor. State and local governments can go above and beyond that to ensure stronger protections for our communities. And our current federal protections are simply through court cases that could easily be overturned any day, as we have been seeing over and over again in the past few months. This is a historic day, and it's going to put Chester County on the right side of history. And I will say, for the LGBTQ plus community, for those of us when we are looking to move, when we are looking for jobs, we do look at communities that have ordinances like this to ensure that we are not going to have to wonder, is my employer going to fire me just for who I am, just for my identity, just for who I love, who I'm married to? I will also thank Chester County for going above and beyond what Delaware County and Montgomery County have done. We have done a complete ordinance and Human Relations Commission. We did not piecemeal it. So thank you very much for doing this right the first time, once, and thank you again. Honestly, words cannot express my gratitude today. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Rhonda Dewey, Upper Euclid Township. I am a board member on the LGBTQ Equality Alliance and also the proud mother of an adult. adult transgender son. I, I want to dial back a couple of years to when a nice man, candidate Eric Rowe, knocked on my door when he was running to become a commissioner. And you asked me a question, and you asked me, if I am elected, what can I do for you? And I know you had hundreds upon hundreds of hundreds of conversations, but I told you that the most important thing to me was to have Chester County enact a nondiscrimination ordinance. And you, you were very gracious. We had a wonderful conversation, and I appreciate that conversation. You said that there were many protections already in place, and you are correct, there are. But what this does is go above and beyond. And Chester County is absolutely within their legal rights to have this kind of ordinance as outlined by the nineteen fifty-five Pennsylvania Human Relations Act. So additionally, I want to thank you for the clear due diligence you did when considering your vote. I thought it was thoughtful, and I do appreciate it. And I hope that a year from now, maybe you and I can sit down and have a discussion and see what has transpired. My sincere hope, as the parent of a child who is part of the LGBTQ plus community, is that there will be nothing brought before this commission. That is my hope. I think that some people are mistaken, that they think this is going to be like a race to correct all the wrongs. And I sincerely hope that we find out that, that, you know, people just feel better. And beyond that, I'd like to thank Commissioners Moskowitz and Maxwell for everything you have done, and also Mr. Byerly, for, Byerman, excuse me, for, you know, being open and willing to champion this. And thank you very much.
Anybody else in person? Mr. Berman?
I see no requests to speak online.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A discussion? All's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful day.